He's telling you to be quiet, Marty.
[laughing]
Hi.
Are you ready?
You can't hear that.
All right, we're gonna start the mayor and council meeting, 7:30 PM. First item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the public hearing of November 6th, 2017. Approve the minutes of the mayor and council meeting of November 6th, 2017, as well as the minutes of the Board of Supervisors of Elections of November 8th, 2017.
I will move that we accept mayor and council meetings for November 6th and the annexation resolution for November 6th.
No, no. The Board of Supervisors of Elections.
Good. Gonna move.
Sorry, but he moved the wrong thing.
You can have it.
I move that we accept the mayor and council minutes for the meeting of November 6th and the Board of Supervisors of Elections of November 8th.
I would like to second Liz's motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that after a lot of bumbling, we unanimously approve the minutes of all those meetings. Total operating funds on hand for the Chester Town tonight is $1,507,561.10. In our broad reach donations, we're still in the red, $25,674.65. However, 22,500 of that should be coming back to us as they were donations that were pledged but have not yet been received. And additionally, we have requested reimbursement funds from the Waterway Improvement Fund, state grant, for the Marina improvements. A total of $85,597 is still owed to us.
Is anyone following up on those pledges? The broad reach pledges?
Case is, we've got two people and they're surveilled.
Shake it out. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the payment of the bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
Your turn, Marty.
I'll sign most of them, I guess. I'll move the payments to the bills.
I know, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna go to Washington College. I believe Jerry Rodrick tonight is making the brief report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I wanted to come down this evening to have a discussion with you about the dangerous intersection of Campus Avenue and Washington Avenue. Just a few weeks ago, we had students struck there. We had one struck in that intersection back in March of 2015. There was numerous conversations with faculty and staff expressing their concerns when using that crosswalk. So, just wanted to kind of take it for a quick tour of that intersection. As you can see, this is the intersection from a couple of different directions. The top left-hand one is beside while coming down along the campus green, crossing over into the alumni house. The one below that is southbound on Washington Avenue, approaching the crosswalk. The one top right is the South Crosswalk on Washington Avenue, Campus Avenue. And then the bottom right is the North Crosswalk on Washington Avenue and Campus Avenue.
That looks like the same picture as the first one. They're identical. Anyway, it doesn't matter.
Can't fool Liz.
So, the southbound lane, pedestrian crossing signs in place, as you can see in the pictures. We have the crosswalks are well marked, the vehicle stopping points are in place on the road. But we have no turn signals for the turn lanes. The stoplights either go green for both directions or they go red. And again, this is crossing Washington Avenue, turning east onto Campus Avenue. We have the crosswalk pedestrian signals in place and the signal for pedestrians across on Campus Avenue. As you're approaching southbound on Washington Avenue, if you were to come down and make a right-hand turn onto Campus Avenue heading back towards college, you'll notice that there's rather large obstruction on that corner of the college property across from the alumni house. This really reduces the visibility that vehicles have when they're rounding that corner. In fact, I noticed when I was taking the pictures on that corner, a student came around that corner very quickly, wasn't really watching to see if pedestrians were going across that crosswalk. So, this is an area that certainly needs to be addressed.
Wait, wait. That's from the alumni house looking north?
Correct.
East? And that's a state-owned?
That's a state-owned box.
Box, okay.
And the bushes are college-owned, I believe.
Okay.
So, again, the one on the left is the crosswalk going to the alumni house. The center picture is just kind of looking at the intersection itself. And the picture on the right is showing leaving college property going to the alumni For Campus Avenue, you can see that we do have turn lanes on both sides, east and west side of Campus Avenue. Traffic lights there, pedestrian crosswalk is marked, pedestrian signal crossing in there. There is no turn signal. And in no time in this intersection, you know, traffic stops for safe crossing. So, having a few comments from some of our faculty members, I'll just put it here to see what they have to say for their words. I won't read them aloud unless you want me to. So, what we would like to see is provide better crossing for our students, faculty and staff. We would like to see the lights be equipped with signal lights. We'd like to see the no right turn on red signs placed at the intersection. And we'd like to see that all signals turn red to allow pedestrians to cross the street safely. This may cause a little bit of a delay in the traffic at that intersection, but if you look at the intersection, it's pretty tight. Houses are pretty close to the roadway. There's not a lot of visibility to see what's going on. When you have traffic going in two directions, you're looking more for the brake in the traffic to quickly shoot across that road. And they're not watching where pedestrians are on the sidewalk or approaching that crosswalk. And this is where we see, you know, at times when the traffic is heavy on that road, this is where we see the car movement quickly trying to dart in and out to get through. So, we've identified this as, you know, a great concern, not only in Washington College, but to the community. If you look at that intersection, you have a lot of school kids that use it. You have a lot of cars going to and from that schools in the morning, buses. So, it does have a lot of traffic going at different times of the day. And pretty much in the morning, around lunchtime, and then between the 3:00 and 5:00, it went really heavy. We have approximately about 225 students, faculty and staff that are crossing that road every day, going to the Cromwell Building. So, that, you know, increases the risk to us. Do you have any questions?
So, are you asking for separate? So, I'm looking, I'm at the stoplight, and I see the red, yellow, green, and that's all there is right now. You think what we need is a completely separate unit with a green turning arrow, a yellow turning arrow, a red turning arrow, to hold those left-hand turners? Do you want that on all four sides?
I think it'd be valuable because, you know, you have that Campus Avenue people also competing for that brake and traffic to make those left turns.
I do it several times a day myself. You do too? But you realize it's a state road? So, this may not be, I mean, I guess we can advocate for it. I totally agree with you.
We agree that this, but for them to reach the S.H.A., told them that the best forum was to come here. It's an issue that was supposedly being studied by the S.H.A. And I think Jerry was on that committee that studied it. And this would be an obvious thing that they should be studying.
Especially since the Cromwell Building opening. I mean, I see so many more pedestrians coming up, so it will be the east side of Washington Avenue and crossing anyway to get to the main campus. Yeah, I don't know. Do we need? I'm not sure about the no right turn on red on all sides of that intersection. If I'm coming along campus and I want to go north, you know, there's pretty good visibility that way since that big shrub was cut down at the corner. I don't know. But still, it's also a very, at times, a very difficult intersection to get through as a driver because the traffic is so heavy. So, a turn signal coming, say, south, I don't know about going north on Washington Avenue could be really, really useful, especially when the school buses.
Can you go back to like a picture where we could see the whole intersection? I'm trying to visualize this, and I want to make sure there's room for everything.
Sam, you need to drone out there and get a picture of that intersection.
I was just thinking the same thing.
We brought this up at the task force meetings. And we also brought up the deteriorating sidewalks on Washington Avenue. We've gotten the road resurfaced so far, and nothing else has happened. When I come down the avenue, on Monday morning, I turn left on campus. I can sit through five lights before I can turn left. I have done that. I called chief one morning, and I asked him if he could please send somebody up there. It's been a while ago. Because you have the school bus traffic coming from Garnett and going across to the middle school.
You have learned, though, if you pull into the intersection.
I will not, I am not suicidal. I know Chester Town.
That's not suicidal. That's plain, ordinary, good driving.
No. They won't even stop for you, you know, just sitting there in traffic trying to turn left. They won't give you the courtesy of turning before they come through. And coming across from Cater Walk, I really think there could be better lighting there because if students are standing under those trees with dark clothing, you know, you can't see them. You really can't, so.
We'll certainly take that back.
Yeah. It's kind of scary right across there.
So, the, you know, the people that are waiting to cross that road really focus on looking for that brake and then making their quick dart. And so, that's what, you know, really increased the danger there.
Seven, eight years ago, the state roads came in here, and I asked them why they have a button on the side where there is no sidewalk to cross over. And they were gonna study that. So, good luck with your study. That was seven or eight years ago, and they haven't studied where the button is, let alone putting in multiple lights.
Well, back in 2015, when we did the pedestrian safety task force report, we included many of those items in there, and certainly this intersection was included as a part of one of our recommendations.
Well, I think it's, I think it's great that you came to get this on the public record as a major concern of yours, and I think we share your concerns. I think what we need to decide is what would be a good next step. And I think, from your end, it would be helpful if you could address a letter to the mayor and council with just a bullet list of improvements that you think would address your safety concerns. And then I think what we could do is, I don't know if you could craft this bill on behalf of the councils, craft a similar letter supporting your statement, and mail it to our contacts at S.H.A. And it is a little frustrating because at that point, it's really in their hands. But I think if we, I think what's gonna be really important, if there's ever gonna be any action on this, is that the town and the college have a unified front. And I think that's, that's the best we can do right now.
You're welcome, man.
And if S.H.A. is gonna do yet another study on Washington Avenue, make sure they do it before classes let up. Because it won't do any good if they do it.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need another study. I just.
I don't think we do either, but you know that.
I would like to compliment the student body for the way they cross up at the main crossing with a button. When they put that in there, I thought, they're never gonna pay any attention to that because for years, they just crossed anywhere as they doggone well felt like it. They did take out that walkway and did the little bit of barrier stuff, but the kids are really, really good about what, I mean, they don't cross against the light. And I see them standing there all the time, waiting for the light to change. So, I don't know what you have done to indoctrinate them, but it's working, and they really have been, you've got a good bunch of kids up there as far as crossing that sidewalk.
All right, so back to this intersection. If you could follow up by sending us just like a one-page letter on your letterhead with your recommendations, and then, once we receive that, we can quickly get off some correspondence supporting your letter with your letter and send both letters to, I guess, Greg, would it be Greg Holt?
Yeah, and I would forward that PowerPoint if you can give us that on this, and I think that would be, I mean, they're not gonna invite you up there to show them this, but I mean, I think it's really eye-opening.
In the short term, is there a way to install one of those flashing pedestrian signs where if it captures motion, it alerts drivers by flashing? I mean, is that something that we can do in the short term?
Again, state highway intersection.
So, they would be responsible for doing something like that?
Right.
So, we could put it on campus, couldn't we?
It's an idea.
There used to be.
They're very touchy about anything you put on their road.
Yeah, but if we put it on our road, on campus.
Wouldn't begin to do it because they made us take the people with the crosswalk out a few years ago because it was a state.
Wow.
People there when the buses went through, morning and night.
Yeah.
I'm not kidding.
And we had the right of way as well.
They said it was a liability for them.
Wow.
So, that was the end of that.
All right, well, if you could follow up with your letter, we'll try to push this ball down this bill as far as we can take it.
Jen, thank you for your support. I'll give you a thumbs up, actually.
Oh, okay, great.
Were you the tech support for that?
I tried.
It looked good. Well done. Okay, thank you, guys. Our next item, which is not written on the agenda, but we can, we would be remiss if we didn't include this, is Chief Baker's monthly report.
Am I pinching for John Henry this evening?
I guess not.
He's waiting for Marty to be on vacation. And then he's coming in.
Someday we'll get that.
That's an inside thing. You probably are not aware of that.
I don't want to be, sir.
No, you might be aware of it.
He's facing charges, you might say.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Good evening. I'd like to present the monthly report from Justham Police Department for October 2017. And our administration was, I put all the percentages in here for the chief. 424 hours, which was 19%. Our criminal investigations were 32 at 1%. Accidents, 8 at 1%. Vehicle patrol, we had 1,017 hours at 45. Foot patrol was 288 at 13%. Training, 23 at 1%. Court, 24 at 1%. And overtime was 134 at 6%. We made 23 adult arrests, and that involved 52 separate charges. The highest was assault, next was traffic, then seven for FTA, six CDS, four VDAUI, three MDoP, two disorderly, one each for failure to obey. FPA, resisting arrest, theft, and trespassing charge. We had one juvenile arrest that was a singular person for one assault. We had two Part I offenses, cleared one by arrest. We had 16 Part II offenses, and we cleared 25 by arrest and one by exception. This is an example of how the months don't always, I don't know if explaining that before, so. We made, and actually, there were quite a few assault cases from previous months that we cleared this one. We had 69 motor vehicle citations and 300 coming on mornings. We had 358 red speed cases and two cell citations. One is for noise, and one was for seatless. Our overtime breakdown, we had 43 and a half hours for special events, 31 for court, 12 and a half for training, and 37 for shift coverage. And like I said, we did 358 for red speed. Our wards were 31 for ward, calls for service, 31 in Ward 1, 94 in Ward 2, 81 in Ward 3, 101 in Ward 4. 23 were outside of the jurisdiction, and four were at large. Our busiest day of the week was Tuesday, and our busiest time was 1 to 2 in the afternoon. Few things that you really have already spoken about, my first opportunity to address from last, from that month. Halloween and its festivities went very well. We really didn't have any compliments, so that was well done. Downraising, I think, was outstanding. The Friday of, I was present, but as a husband and citizen, so I had the opportunity to be the fly on the wall and be in the crowd. Very well done, I think, so, and police force were present. And then, lastly, we had quite a few parades during the month, and the best part for me was playing with the Ferraris. Back story, about half of them came, and they were ready to go, and the other half, another 10 or 12, were not present, and the Ferrari person was like, where are the Ferraris? Fortunately, the parade kind of backed up, so they had about 20 minutes to get there, and, you know, like, are they gonna make it? And I said, they're Ferraris, they're gonna make it. And they joined the other group, and I think that was a really neat opportunity, so I think a lot of people enjoyed it. If you don't have any questions, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
I have a wondering question.
Yes, sir.
And I have, if you may be able to clear it up rather quickly with that, because a student was hit by Washington College, which is apparently in the crosswalk.
Yes.
And the car was making the right turn on the green light, but they have to yield to anybody that's in the crosswalk.
Absolutely.
And there's no charges referred. I was just wondering why.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't do the interview. The driver was not able to see the student in the A post. I know that. I'm not aware of the details from the officer. I can certainly find that out for you. But I would agree, it's been coming on the driver to yield to the pedestrian. It's their fault, no matter whether they saw it or not.
Yeah, probably 85 to maybe even higher. Usually, it's pedestrians' fault.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Jerry, but it usually is. They're crossing at the wrong time, at the wrong lights, the wrong location.
These circumstances seem to show up.
Or they're trying to become a red light themselves.
Yes, sir.
But in this case, it sounded like that pedestrian was doing exactly what it was supposed to do, and the car hit him, so. Punishment is a deterrent, and if somebody would've got a citation, it would make people a little more careful.
I have to agree with Marty. I mean, there are some really, really dangerous crosswalks in town. One of the worst ones, especially on Saturday morning, by the farmer's market is the one that goes across to, or two, actually, that cross towards the manual church across Cross Street. Another one is the one at the post office. I'll tell you how many times I've been crossing there and have nearly been hit. People do not stop for pedestrian crosswalks in this town. And I'd like to see more enforcement of that. And if you have to.
Well, that just speaks to a broader issue. You know, people and vehicles do not respect cyclists, nor do they respect pedestrians.
What they do in other places.
Do they, though?
Ah, yeah. Yeah, better than they do here.
Thank you.
All right, chief, thanks, chief. Okay, our next report. Here's the town manager.
Charter says that within 48 hours after the closing of the polls, the Board of Supervisors of Elections will determine the vote cast for each candidate and shall certify the results of the election to the town manager, who shall record the results in the minutes of the council. We have excellent minutes of the election on November 8th. For mayor, total of 344 votes. Congratulations, Chris Salino. For Ward 1, 277. Owen Bailey, 104. Bob Miller, 38. David Foster, 135. Congratulations, David Foster. Ward 3, total of 27 votes. Elsworth Tolliver. Congratulations, Elsworth. There were 25 requests for absentee ballots. 21 were received in time to be counted for the election. The board met again to open these ballots on Wednesday, November 8th at 5:00 PM, even though they knew that the ballots wouldn't change the outcome of the election. Absentee ballots, a total of 20. Mayor Sereno got 21, Owen Bailey got 8, David Foster, 8, and Bob Miller had 4. There was one provisional ballot taken at the election but struck at this meeting, and the voter did not register in Ward 1 until October 19th. So, basically, that's the results of the elections, so I'm discussing this, we recorded in the minutes. I want to compliment the Board of Supervisors of Elections, volunteers, the election workers, all day long, from early till late, and especially Jennifer Mulligan, the election coordinator, who does this without additional pay or time off or anything else. And in the last two elections, I have to say that there were incidents that she had to correct or had to endure, I would say. And I don't know how much longer we can expect people to do that if they're not respected. I'd say that the conduct of the board and Jennifer are above reproach. It's a little tiny town. We pay for our own elections. It puts us in that's kind of a difficult situation where you have to pick the person with the most integrity to do this. We have the citizens that have the most integrity, and we have Jennifer Mulligan, who everyone knows has integrity, coming and going. So, what I'm getting, what I'm getting around to here is, I think, and I've been trying to get this done since the 90s, we need to move our elections to the gubernatorial and presidential election cycle. There's, I understand from, and I did leave out the county, and I want to thank them very much for helping us with our election process. Without them, it would be far more expensive than it is. But it is an expensive thing. There's some exposure, as I said. Apparently, we have to ask our delegation for a special bill to enable us to go into that process, which will take seven years. And we'll also, we will have to add.
It takes seven years?
Because we can't do it all at once. We have to do it in cycle with our elections. And we have to add a year or subtract a year from everybody's term. So, I'm pretty sure that everybody would say, let's add a year. People get elected, so you really can't take away what people who vote them in.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Are you about to add a fifth year to my second term?
Well, you don't have to take it. Well, we'll add one to everybody's but yours.
You're talking too fast, man. You're talking way too fast.
Actually, I'm not asking for anything tonight. I just want to tell you that I think when you have good people doing a great job, you don't want to have the exposure of block site or having to run somebody out of the fire hall. And these things really happen. I mean, everybody has their own opinions, but when they start naming names, it really picks you out of the crowd.
Well, it also will get a little better turnout.
Oh, yeah, good question.
A lot better.
No dissection on Mr. Tolliver, but if no one's running against him. I ran with nobody running against me, and I ended up with 70 votes, but I had to go out and carry them in piggyback to get them to vote. I mean, there's no reason for you to come, you know?
That's right. You're totally right.
But if you have, if you have to be there anyway, they're gonna vote, so.
So, that, but I thought the chief part would appeal to you mostly, Marty. But basically, it's an expense that we shouldn't have to have. And as the town gets larger and more people run, and, you know, you just, we're lucky that we have these people. We're lucky we got Bob Ortiz at the last minute. He did a terrific job as chairman, so I'm finishing my monologue about this, okay? But I will be asking the county, if we get this special authorization, I'll be asking the town if we can go ahead and have our delegate introduce a bill like that. Because there's only a couple of towns in the state that have gone to gubernatorial and presidential. They really kind of frustrate you from doing it. I think it'd be a lot of fun. Have president, governor, just down there.
That's the way it should be. I mean, we might help the governor, too, because some people might come out. My people would come out anyway, but.
No, no, no.
Jennifer, how about the financial reports? Are they in?
Among the checks?
Yeah, oh, yeah, everything's done, wrapped up in a nice, neat little bag.
Well, it just says you're gonna send them a notice and tell them to be in by the 17th, if they didn't send it.
Oh, they're here, yeah.
They got them in.
I did those on the 8th. Yeah, everything's all wrapped up now.
So, among the checks I did sign in the last couple of weeks, Marty, was almost $4,500 in expenses for the election. I'm sure there were other expenses. So, are you saying that if we went to the other cycle bill, we wouldn't have those expenses, or we would share them with the county board?
We wouldn't be afraid of expense, but we wouldn't be paying election.
We wouldn't be printing our own ballots and wards.
And judges, supper and breakfast.
How many towns do it? How many towns do it on?
I think Frederick was able to convert. [inaudible].
I think, I think I looked into it. It was about three of them, I think, in the whole.
Well, there were several other towns that had elections the same day that we did, a couple of weeks ago.
By the way, we used to have a December election. Our turnout was even smaller. So, I helped get the charter changed, so we had like the November date, you would be familiar with, the first Tuesday in November. But it's an off-year. We have some of them in county here that come in June or July or May.
Yeah, I think Rockfall goes in the summertime.
And we don't flip a coin, though, if there's a tie.
I know.
We're conducting investigations.
This is the first time that I've done the election, or helped even when June was here, that there's actually been other elections on the same day because it just happened to fall on the Tuesday after the first Monday. It's usually just. It's usually just us, nobody else knows it's happening.
Yeah, anyway, that's it, I will find out what we have to do again. Shmondia is a big help, and she told us what the issues are, the hurdles are, of going to that. And even though it's gonna take time to get two election cycles in, this seven years will be worth it in the long run, Marty, because we just can't be second-guessed after an election, it's very hard to take that home with you.
I know we've been talking about this for three elections, we've been talking about the three that I've been involved in, of getting the change.
I think our delegation is there, they want to help us, so this is a small thing, they can help us introduce a bill, we'll see how it goes.
All right, sounds like a plan. Okay, is that it, Bill?
I'm done.
Okay, mayor's report, I said at our last meeting, I would give a comprehensive update on the marina, which I'm gonna do, but before I get to that, why don't I, I'm gonna take care of these three reminders. These are fun reminders, and so, every year, the Friday after Thanksgiving is when St. Nicholas himself, Santa Claus, arrives in Chestertown. This year, that falls on Friday, November 24th. From 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock is when the festivities are, right at the intersection of High Street and Cross Street. We block off that block, there's Kent County Marching Band, we turn on the lights for the first time, and Santa comes in on a big old fire truck, and it's a really cool event for the kids, it's a great family-friendly event. And it's followed up very closely the next morning with our annual Christmas parade, Saturday, November 25th at 10:00 AM.
I have heard nothing about whether we are...
We had an email today.
Yeah, she just sent it today.
Oh, it must've been after I checked out.
Or the request to be judges.
I asked her again earlier today, yeah.
So, yeah, these, both of those events, Santa's arrival and the Christmas parade are sponsored and really coordinated by DCA, so kudos to them, because it's always a great way to bring people into town for a really fun, family-friendly event, a couple of them. And then the following weekend is what used to be Winterfest Weekend, and is now being called Dickens of a Christmas, it's a three-day event, starting Friday, first Friday, December 1st, and that is being sponsored by the Main Street Chestertown Program with a bunch of other partners, and they've got all kinds of great stuff planned. It should be a really, really fun weekend. So, come down town for those three events. And then for my marina presentation, I'm actually gonna stand up, I'm gonna project over here, assuming my projector turns on.
Let me turn the lights out, Chris.
Yeah, if we could just turn these front lights out.
The front ones are not...
Did it show up on the green wall?
Oh, yes.
The water will look a little more polluted than ever, but...
So, do you see a white light coming out of here, Bill?
I saw a little sign warming up still.
It warmed, oh, air con, sure. So, basically, I thought it would be a good time to give us a comprehensive update on where we stand, where we hope to go in the short term, where the funding is, and what we think we could accomplish, I'll say, in the next calendar year. Before I get started, one thing that's really neat about this presentation is that Sam, at my request, agreed to meet me down in the parking lot of the Fish Whistle Restaurant last week, and he's got this cool little business, Shore Studios, this drone business, and he got, this isn't from that day, but he got some awesome aerial photographs of this facility that I think you're gonna really appreciate, because it really clearly shows what we've done, and where we still need to do some work. So, this shot right here is from downrigging weekend, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, really cool shot, and it shows you sort of the impact that the marina has. So, whenever I start one of these, I review why we're even involved in this business. So, the town bought this marina two years before I took office in 2012. The idea is we were gonna preserve public access to the river, preserve our history as a working port dating back to 1706. To me, the biggest one is economic development, the other two are awesome, but number three, I think, is gonna have a lasting impact on the community. And then these are two important ones, that as a municipality, we have access to grant funds that a private, for-profit marina owner would not be able to get, and basically, the cost of this project would be cost-prohibitive for a private investor wanting to just buy this and run it as a marina. This was always a marginally profitable marina, even though it was in great shape. So, the only way in the private sector this would make sense to rehabilitate was for someone to do what happened at Scott's Point, which is basically to buy the marina, put condos on land, and indeed, this slips out to the marina, to the condo owners, and if that were to happen at this facility, we would forever lose access to the river, and really wouldn't be a port anymore. And again, I want to reiterate this point, that I really believe, once we pull this off, this facility has the potential to be a huge economic engine for Chestertown and Kent County, and really the upper shore. This was a really great downrigging, we had amazing weather on Friday and Saturday, this is another Shore Studio image of that. If you talk to any of the business owners about the impact of this weekend on their bottom line, I can't overstate it enough, Jeff Carroll says every year, "By far my best weekend of the year," but the impact goes all the way up to the hotels on the north end of town, and really every business in between. So, to me, what really gets me, you know, motivated to keep doing this, and it's been a long, arduous process, is that potential to really have this be an economic driver, especially for downtown where it's so close. So, review of the property lines, basically, we own everything in red on that drawing. The Fish Whistle is that yellow rectangle in the middle, Scott's Point is to the left, and that's all private we own. So, we started off on Phase One. Phase One is everything in red. We wanted to raise the bulkhead on the right-hand side, we wanted new finger piers, we wanted to replace the boat ramp, and we wanted raised walkways to the left near Scott's Point. So, where are we on Phase One, which I had really hoped would've been done a long time ago, but for a variety of reasons, we're still plugging away, but we're close. So, this is the condition, this is what this looked like when I came into office. If you look on the right at that bulkhead, there ain't a whole lot going on there, these finger piers are obviously in tough shape, this was after a big blowout low tide like we had today, there's like two feet of water in there, so we needed dredging, which we did in, I think, 2016. And so, this is early this year, when we really finally got the permitting we needed, we had funding ready to go to really address this, we brought in King Fisher, an outfit that does a lot of work all up and down the shore, and they basically started really tearing things apart and replacing things. So, this is the scene in like, early spring. This is them driving these pilings. Anybody that says this is an easy job wasn't down there watching these folks drive these pilings. First of all, those pilings are 55 feet long, because even though the water's basically four feet deep, there's about 30 feet of just soft dew, not to mention that when people built this area out, it's basically built on fill, so they would drive a piling in and then hit like, a giant tree trunk from 1920 that somebody threw in there, and it was an adventure watching them try to get these pilings in, but they eventually made this really awesome wall of pilings, this is where the boat ramp had been, in the foreground, they installed the vinyl sheeting, which you see behind this gentleman, and this guy right here is putting the stringers out for the walkway. Again, this is all happening in the spring and early summer. It's easy to forget what a mess this was while this was all going on, so they're backfilling here behind the boardwalk, which is another thing that was desperately needed. And then finally, in June, we had this finished boardwalk that's a good two feet above where it had been prior to this, and anybody that's walked this, the difference between this and what had been there in 2014 is absolutely night and day, no comparison. All right, so there's the, you can see the new vinyl sheeting, the new pilings, et cetera. So, that part is basically done for Phase One. The boat ramp, you can see they ripped out the boat ramp, it's, needs a lot of TLC in this image. We wanted to widen it, so the red area is the width of the previous ramp, the yellow area is the width of the current ramp, and so I'm happy to say, this was interesting because we needed, you know, we're using state funds for this, so they get their engineers involved, and they have certain design elements in mind that weren't necessarily the same as our contractors' original ideas, so that caused some delays. I really thought this was gonna be done by Tea Party, and it got done about three days before downrigging, but if you go down and look at this ramp, you can't see this anymore, there's probably enough rebar in this boat ramp to support like a 50-story building. This thing is a fact in the ground that ain't going anywhere for a long time. This is them pouring the concrete, and the way they got this to be dry is they brought, they built a wall at the end of where the ramp is, and then had these giant hydraulic pumps pump this thing out, and then they had like, an hour to pour all the concrete, set it, and then put these grooves in. And so, this is basically done. That's what the boat ramp looked like right before downrigging weekend, I used it several times, it is, it's very, very solid, I'll just put it that way. Another part of Phase One, and there it is, look at this, look at this Sam Showgate aerial shot of the new boat ramp. That's last week. We also wanted to address the walkways on the Scott's Point side, which were flooding quite a lot, the bulkheading there is relatively young, I want to say it's 10 to 12 years old, but the water was coming over them a lot, and that walkway had kind of rotted out in places. So, basically, we thought we would use the existing pilings on the exterior on the waterside that are in great shape, we didn't need to replace the vinyl bulkheading there, we just wanted to replace that boardwalk, and that's what the replacement boardwalk looked like. So, they drove new interior pilings, new stringers, all new decking, it's wider, it's about two feet higher, and it's, it's great. Just, so this is all really, really good stuff. So, again, look at this, look at this aerial shot of Shore Studios, do you? So, again, things that we've done include, I've got a laser pointer here, this, this boardwalk has been raised, the bulkheading is the same, it didn't need to be replaced, so we just raised this, the boat ramp is brand spanking new, and this entire bulkhead and boardwalk are raised and are completely new. This all cost around $400,000 plus, we had some cost overruns for the boat ramp, it was basically paid for by a $200,000 grant from the state's Waterway Improvement Fund, which is through DNR. It was matched by the $200,000 that the college involved with their armory transfer from the town to the college that we kind of set aside, and that's basically how we paid for this thus far. So, what needs to be done? If you recall, in that very first image from 2014, there are a bunch of finger piers here that right now do not exist, so this is gonna be really very cool when this is done, because what's gonna happen is, this is a floating dock that's gonna be about 100 feet long, and this is in here partially for ADA reasons in the boat ramp, but we worked with DNR and our contractor, this is gonna be a 100-foot-long floating dock with three floating finger piers. What's really nice about that is when you launch your boat, now that this bulkhead is so much higher, if this didn't exist, you might launch your boat at a low tide, and the dock might be five feet above where your boat is, it's really hard to get out. So, what'll be really, really nice, and I've seen this in other facilities, is now you can launch your boat, and this floating dock, regardless of the tide, will be right at the level of your boat. And you can kind of launch your boat, and this is about a 60-foot stretch here before you get to this finger pier, so that's plenty of room for a boat to be launched, tied up here, and we can have boats in these finger pier slips that are floating, which is gonna be tide-proof, which is nice. And then these are gonna be fixed finger piers, so again, they were fixed before, they will be higher to match the height of this bulkhead, and we hope to get, when is this floating pier getting delivered?
Uh, this week, probably.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be, I think the timeframe for this being delivered is after Thanksgiving, so hopefully, literally next week, our contractor will be back in this basin to finish out what we're calling Phase One. So, I said earlier, there were some cost overruns, and this is new news that I haven't broadcast publicly, only to anybody. We, we got a private citizen to basically make a legacy gift to this project, it was essentially unsolicited, I ended up talking to this individual quite a lot about the amount he wanted to give and where he wanted to apply it. The gentleman's name is Michael Lawrence, he lives outside of town at a place called Grassy Mead Farm, which is on Comedy's Bite. Unfortunately, he's been diagnosed with cancer, he's also battling some heart conditions. Bottom line is, his health isn't in the best shape, his cancer may be terminal, and he wanted to give a gift to the town so that he had a legacy, and he just loves the town and thought this was an important economic project for us, and basically, he gave us straight up a gift of $100,000, which is our first private donation from any individual or business, and I just, it was just awesome. And so, that's gonna help us cover some of these cost overruns, and it may even get us turning the corner for this bulkhead. We're probably going to name, I'm still kind of talking to Michael about this, this is eventually gonna be a public plaza, so I gave him the option of naming one of these piers after him, we were naming the boardwalk after him, or this plaza, so I think his current thinking is, this is gonna be called Grassy Mead Plaza, and he wants to name it after his farm, which he really just loves this farm. So, please print that, he wanted to, he also wanted to say, like, if other people can help, I want to serve as an example of what can be done to help the community, so. All right, so this is ongoing right here, we talked about removing this shed that's kind of always in the flood area, and basically creating this public plaza, and taking out the Williams Marine Shed, which had basically been abandoned for at least 15 to 20 years, and then putting a new Chestertown Marina Interpretive Center there. So, this is what the site looked like at the start of this year. Thanks to Shore Studios and Sam Showgate, this is what it looks like as of this week.
Thanks for the shout, shout out, Chris.
So, this has been, obviously, the shed has been taken out, what you're seeing here are boots on the ground, these guys are subs, Avirki's contracting, won the bid to build this building, and they are basically preparing this site for pouring the footings of the new building. One of the things the state has been telling us is, "Please spend all the money we've given you before you come ask us for more." We love the state, this project would not be happening without them, and so the money that we have is, well, I'll get to that, but anyway, this is kind of cool. They're, you know, digging the holes and putting the rebar in, and this has all been poured now, and I think they're gonna continue work on the foundation after Thanksgiving very soon. So, this is what we hope to build, you might recall, we had a two-story rendering, we got the bids, it was almost $2 million, that was just not gonna happen unless somebody stepped up and wrote me a check for $1.5 million, which I just didn't think was gonna happen. We do have $480,000 that has been awarded to us, $400,000 from Department of Housing and Community Development, which does not require a match, which is an incredible opening donation grant from the state. We also have $80,000 from Maryland Heritage Area Authority to get this going, we're calling this Phase One. I'm hoping that money will get us at least the shell and foundation of this building, and what's, this is probably of all the elements, gonna be the most interesting, because we don't, this is about a $1 million building, we basically have half the money in hand, or that's been awarded. The question is, when we're done spending that $480, hopefully, that'll be a good stopping point or pausing point, because we have more fundraising to do for this. So, if anybody's out there and wants this really awesome building named after them for the next 50 years, if you can match this, I'll be happy to do that for you. So, we may want to consider some private fundraising, if we go back to the state for more funding, we'll probably have to wait till the next fiscal year. So, I'm telling all of you this, because we may be operating this marina out of like Santa's shed next year, and I'm actually serious. So, I've talked to Bill about this, we're not necessarily on the same page, but this is an interesting situation right here, but we've got to spend the money, we actually applied for another 80 from MHAA, and they said, "We love your project, but we can't give you this grant until you spend the last grant that you were awarded." So, it's an impediment to our fundraising right now that we haven't spent that. All right, so, this is, there's a lot to be done here, as you can see. So, now we're talking about what really has been needed for years, which is replacing this entire bulkhead and putting a new raised walkway, so that this bulkhead looks like this bulkhead, well, actually, we want this bulkhead to look like this bulkhead. All right, so a couple things need to happen, in order for us to do this, this building actually has to be removed, because we need a concrete wall to be put in here for a tieback system, pull that bulkheading up. So, in the very near future, so here's what it looks like now, here's what we want it to look like, so again, we talked about making this like this big public plaza, Grassy Mead Plaza, named after Michael Lawrence. Right now, the shed is here, and this big, ugly, rusty fuel tank is here, so we need to get this out of the way to build this plaza, we'll also have a concrete tieback wall that will be poured along here. So, those two structures are slated to go soon, hopefully next month, Bill?
Yep.
So, this is gonna go, we need to bring in MDE so they can, this is a big fuel tank with a lot of fuel, and we gotta take whatever fuel's in there, get it out and sell it back to our provider, get this fuel tank out of there, MDE comes in and supervises, make sure that it's all environmentally friendly, and then we need to remove this, partially to create that plaza, but also, we need that wall to go right... partially to create that plaza, but also we need that wall to go right through there for the tieback system. So if that's not clear to you...
Are we going to have to do...
It should be clear, because there's this awesome photograph from my drone.
And those yellow arrows.
That helps draw your attention to what I want of you to see.
Are we going to have to do any environmental remediation to remove that fuel tank? Or we don't know yet, or...
Oh, it's above ground, so the answer is no.
Is no. Okay, good.
We had one incident a couple of years ago where we had a spill and we cleaned up, and that was the end of it.
Yeah. All right, so that's...
We're still going to sell fuel, though, right?
Yes, we are. Our fuel tank will be moved back so it's on higher ground.
It's going to be buried, right?
And our... No, it's not going to be buried. It's really... I don't think so.
I don't think so, because it was a really cost prohibitive to bury it and run it underground.
Because early in the planning, we talked about burying it.
It's not far down to the water table, though, and I think for the pressures on it. But the fuel pier will be to the left side of the plaza, sort of. It's not... The pier won't be here anymore. It'll be upriver just a bit.
All right, so the other thing that needs to happen for this bulkhead to go in is we got to get rid of these two docks. I've been wanting to get rid of these two docks for a while, and we just got to do it. It's just these... We're at a stage here where I don't even want to try to move these down the road another year. So we were hoping that we could take all these out at once and replace them all in the same winter. What I'm here to tell you tonight is I don't think we have the funding currently to do that. I'm confident we have the funding to take these out and hopefully run out a new fuel dock and run out an extension of the Sultana Pier and the Finger Piers coming here. So we really... If we can do that, we won't lose any slips. We'll actually gain a couple slips, because we'll be coming out farther. But that's after talking to Bill and Case about this at length and deliberating for hours. That's what we think needs to happen. So here's like an overhead view. God, these shots are just incredible. These are the two docks that we plan to remove. So again, they need to be removed so we can kind of open this area up to replace this whole bulkhead and raise it and put that tieback trench here. We also need to remove these because this whole area, like this used to be, is about two feet deep. So we need to dredge this area. So we've been working with DNR. We have about $200,000 that are left over from the grant that we used to dredge this out. And this is the area that we want to dredge to a controlling depth of six feet. All right, so here's like that overhead view. And again, what's great about this DNR money is part of that money can be used to remove the docks and part of that money can be used to dredge in that big rectangular area.
And it's 100% grant.
And it's another 100% grant. So again, the state has been incredibly supportive of this, and this would not be happening without them.
How long would that dredging last?
That's a great question, Marty. I don't know the answer to that. So that brings us to this new bulkhead and walkway. Again, we're going to probably need those big 50-foot pilings. This all needs to happen in order for the backfill behind it to have something to set on. So once we get these docks out of there, once we get these store and the tank out of here, this is, you know, and we've dredged, this is the next focus area, because this has to be done before a lot of these landside things can happen. And so that's the area right there. Now, how are we going to pay for that? This is probably going to be... We have a range actually from the contractor. I think we're from 350 to 450. So on here, I put the high end of that range. We have a $998,000 grant loan from USDA. And we've been talking at length with Waterway Improvement Fund and USDA. Can we use federal funds to match the state funds and vice versa? And we're pretty confident we have it to where they are both willing to pay half of this piece of the project. So Waterway Improvement Fund is really specific. They can't match or pay for anything that happens up on land. It's all got to be right on the water. So we're working with them. In addition to paying half of this, Waterway Improvement Fund, the state money, may be able to pay for things like parking in the boat ramp area, because that's directly tied to getting a boat in the water. And they will pay for portions of the fill that are right along the water. So I had hoped that 100% of USDA was going to match 100% of the Waterway Improvement Funds that we have. That's not going to be the case, but it's still going to be a really significant match for us. So again, this is kind of like, I put January through June. Man, I wish it was quicker than that. I just... Based on how long this all took, I don't want to promise anything, but this is all going to be kind of happening one thing after the other, starting in December. And lastly, let's say we've got... We've got these finger piers in. We've done this bulkhead. We've already demolished these docks. These two docks here, we've dredged. We're hoping that we can build out a new fuel dock and extend the Sultana Pier with these finger piers. And actually, we're going to leave this dock as it is for another year. So this diagram, that's why number one and two are highlighted. Now, how are we going to pay for those two? If you recall, we did this giant letter-writing campaign. We'd asked for 1.5 million of just a flat-out capital grant, and we didn't get the 1.5, but we did get 500. And so we're going to bid this out after Thanksgiving. We'll see where the numbers come in, but we're cautiously optimistic. This is going to get us very, very close to pulling that part of this off. Now, when that's all done, we've got to raise the grade of this entire yellow gigantic area. If you've been down there, actually, just within the last two weeks, this has flooded four or five times easily. So we want to raise this entire area. Depending on kind of where you are, it's anywhere from a foot and a half to two feet. If you've ever been out on here on the Sultana Canister Street Dock, this dock almost never goes underwater. So we're using that height to try to get this whole area to be this height. The only two times I've ever seen Sultana's dock underwater were from really extreme events like Hurricane Sandy, Hurricane Isabel. And that's still going to happen. This whole place will probably be underwater again at some point with a hurricane. But hopefully, this will nip the nuisance-type of flooding we're getting almost weekly in the bud. And so we... Well, after we use USDA money for some of this, we'll probably have about 700 grand left. That will be in this priority, probably backfill first. Stormwater improvements, that's the whole purpose. They gave us this money. And then going in and redoing some of the parking spaces. And we'll just have to see how far that money can take us. But the main idea behind that money is to raise the grade and make sure that less stormwater is running directly into the river. Couple things about raising the grade. You can't just come in there and drive 250 trucks of fill into an area that has an active restaurant, a boat-like Sultana, running trips six days a week, river packet. So once we're ready to do the backfilling, we're going to need to sit down and talk to a lot of different people about how to best phase this. So we're going to need to talk to the fish whistle about how we might be able to backfill areas around them and still have them be open. This all has to be done after the bulkhead is installed. So there's going to be a delay on when this can happen. When we do this backfill, we're also going to be putting in new water and fuel and sewer lines, which has been desperately needed. As I said, stormwater retention, paved parking areas, and that waterfront plaza. It's kind of all part of raising the grade. The waterfront plaza is kind of neat. It's a paver... It's interlocking pavers that are about two feet tall. So that's actually where that... That's not going to have backfill there. It's going to have these specialized pavers to get people's feet about two feet up off from where they are now. But the water will be able to kind of flow underneath us. It should be really interesting and pretty cool. So this is what High Street looked like, you know, three weeks ago. So that's why this is needed. I think that's it. This... I spent about four hours doing this last night, and I went to bed, and I was like, "Oh, my God, is this really going to happen?" And the answer is, in fits and starts, yes. And we'll just have to keep plugging away. So that's where we are.
That's amazing.
Little project, nice little side project.
I just... I have one question.
Yeah, sure.
What are you going to attach the floating docks to?
I don't know. I try not to get involved on that level. But DNR has talked to you guys about how they attach those, what they slide up and down on.
They slide up and down on pilings.
Yeah, but I mean, you've got permanent pilings on the walkway. They slide up and down.
They'll slide up and down in front of them. There's a space... There's a narrow space.
It didn't... Okay, because it didn't look like it.
Yeah, these aren't really the technical drawings. The firm that does the marinas in Rock Hall, the firm that is working, Kingfisher, really nice people. They've been interested in this project since 2012. And they finally took me down. They showed me Haven Harbor. Incredibly impressive. And because they're working here, you know that they'll back their product up.
Question?
So will Pier One and Two be floating docks?
That's a great question. Let's go back to that diagram here. The answer is yes and no. So ideally, assuming the funding works, we want anything new that we build, other than these three fixed finger piers here, to be floating. So on the plans, we have specked out a floating fuel dock, so that rises and falls with the tides. On this, this is... I don't know if you can see from the diagram. This is where Sultana lives right here. This is like Echo Hills Boats. This is already a fixed pier that's in great shape and we don't need to mess with. So the idea with this is these are just also fixed to match the existing condition right here. And assuming one day we get the matching funds that we need from Waterway Improvement to address this, we would like this to also be floating. And the numbers have to work, but that's the idea. So along these lines, because 100% of the USDA money isn't going to be able to be used as a match, we're still working on how much we'll be able to match. We're still... If this all happens, we may still end up with about $200,000 in Waterway Improvement Fund money that we can't spend yet because we still are working on a match. And we do have an application in this fiscal year for an additional $300,000. We'll see if we get that. But we may end up having done all of this with $1 left, where we have anywhere from $200,000 to $500,000 to address this. And that's where we'll really be making a push to get matching funds. And we may need to do it from private donors. Because the town, the town really... If I could go back in time when the town bought this, it would be... It had been nice if the town had worked with like Eastern Shore Land Conservancy or some group to buy this and then give it to us. But because we just bought it outright, you know, our matching funds that we might otherwise be using are really going in to pay off the mortgage for this property. So it's been interesting that way. These organizations have been incredibly supportive, but finding that match for a town of our size is really, really a challenge. Any other questions?
So this kind of is addressed to the council, okay? When it comes to economic development, when do we start planning for directing all of that economic development when this is done in town?
Yeah. So the whole idea behind this building, calling it the Waterfront Interpretive Center and not like the Marina Store, is that that building should serve almost like a waterfront visitor center where you come in here to buy oil for your boat, but there's rack cards and signage telling you about the history of the town, directing you into town, which we... Right now, there's really nothing down there that even lets you know you're three blocks from a bunch of cool shops and art galleries and whatnot. So that's part of it. Assuming we pull this building off and have the signage that we've envisioned, that's part of the idea. And then as soon as that's done, I mean, we've got to market this. We do turn a lot of boating traffic away because they just know that this is a silted-in rundown marina and people kind of stopped coming with their 10 and 12 trawlers that they used to visit us in the early 90s when I first started working here. But we're going to need to market that and get those people back.
So I'm seeing us having to start paying for ads in boating magazines, things like that, probably starting now in anticipation that this project will be done soon.
Yeah, I've been working with this long enough that I want to see some stuff in the water before I put any ads in there. Because it's just the delays are just... They just kind of come up organically. And sometimes it's permitting, sometimes it's engineering, sometimes it's funding. Sometimes it's... There's a lapse, and the contractor gets us to another project, and he doesn't come back for two weeks or whatever it is. Or we're hitting like crazy obstructions that were there, put there in the 1880 or whatever it is. So I'm a little hesitant to start advertising anything until we're at least done with docks one and two. Then I think we can start putting boots on the ground for really getting people up there. Any other questions?
Chris, I thought in the early discussions about the marina plan that we were actually going to lose one dock. But the docks would be coming further out.
We did. So this dock...
I'm looking at...
We're taking out one here and one here.
So Liz, this dock takes the place of a dock that's here and here.
Okay, I'm seeing it now, yeah.
I'll go back to this.
I got it. I got it. I'm looking at a satellite picture of it. Yeah, I understand.
We're going to extend it 35 feet out or something.
60 feet.
70.
So again, Liz, right now, we have a fuel dock and a transient dock. You just want to put one honking dock right here.
I see it now.
And then we kind of make up for these lost slips by running finger piers this way from this existing dock.
So there's more turning room in the end.
In theory, there will be. It's actually not going to be that much different, because we wanted to move this dock a little bit this way. So there may be more turning room here.
Turning room in that basin, yeah.
This one will be pretty similar. It might be a little bit bigger, but it's not going to be as much of an increase as you might think.
So will downrigging be able to be bigger then?
If we get this, this, and this, the answer is definitively yes. If we get this and this and we're still here, the answer is maybe. It depends on Drew getting really, really creative. One thing, I don't want to like bring this up, it's premature, but like, this is going to take a while to do all of this. I'm hoping it will be done by next October. But by next summer, it may not look like we're going to get there, and we might need to talk about what's going to happen with downrigging in 2018. So I just want to put that out there. I don't want to scare people, but just again, like, there's so much to do here, and there's so many sort of potential delays that we need to put that out there now, that that's at least a possibility, hopefully not.
On the marketing side, remember, Sam, a few weeks ago, Bill sent to all of us a really out-of-date-now video that was made for a boating magazine about cruising up the river to Chester Town and all the great things there are to do here. It would be super if maybe some local provider with a studio could recreate an update of that when it's ready. But I agree with Chris. You don't want to put something out there and then not be able to deliver.
Exactly, right.
Well, that yachting magazine, that guy was in the area again this year. That's why I sent it out. So he'll do it when we look like something different. And one thing that Chris mentioned some about the new dredging, when we also dredged the basin, and that was a big deal for us because we could rent a lot more along...
Sure.
And also, as a deductive alternate, we're putting the third pier, the Down River Pier, in just in case we get a preferential price by doing it in volume. And we'll put it in if we can.
Yeah, the other thing, we're getting bids on all three docks. So also, it's important for me, if we're short, I want to know how short are we? So if someone comes and wants to make a gift to the town, I can be like, hey, if you give us X, we can do Y. If you give us A, we can do B. And also, if we're going back to the state again, Waterway Improvement, we want to be able to tell them, this will get us to the finish line. Please help us. So those bids are hopefully going out again in December, correct, Bill?
They're ready. Actually, we bid them out this week. We put the ads in the paper.
There you go.
For the piers.
All right, so the bottom line, stuff's happening. There's a lot of stuff to do. It's going to be ugly and painful before it's gorgeous and awesome and just be ready for a wild and interesting ride. Hopefully, less on the wild and more on the interest.
But lots of photos, right? There'll be more photos.
There'll be a heck of a lot of before-and-after pictures. I have to affirm to people that stuff is being done, so happening.
That's not quite the same environment.
Yeah, that's not...
That's when it dried up and the tide's out.
That was not Chester Town, though. Well, good job, Chris.
Thank you.
Very good. How cool were those pictures? Really, really cool.
Not bad publicity either, Sam.
And you're giving this presentation again to the GCI?
I don't know how extensively they want me to talk about it. They want me to talk about it, but also Kurt Landgraf was going to talk about the college's aspirations, which is also happening right now, which is very cool. So I may give more of a quick overview. Not sure. All right, Ward reports. Why don't we start over here, Marty?
In case anybody can't tell, this is a purple tide. A rain was on the 23-0 yesterday. I tend to wear my purple glasses. On November 11th, I attended a dinner and show at Washington College. And I bring that up not only because I got a free dinner, but I had paid for my wife. When I got there, I was greeted by a college student and given a card, an envelope that contained a card thanking me for my service and all of that there about that. That was, that was kind of, that's kind of nice because it's been almost 16 years ago. And she came by later and asked if she could be over there. She sat with us. What a nice young lady. And apparently, she's from the state of Oregon. Came here to go to Washington College. So, it was a nice, it was a nice function and I think it's nice for the college to do that for us. On November 15th, I represented Chestertown at the Council of Government meeting in Rock Hall. The nice thing about that, I've been doing that now for almost 10 years, it's nice to hear the towns are all doing well. Everybody gave a report and it made you feel good. And that wasn't always true. When we were in the recession, everybody was just complaining about this store closing or there's no money for this. So things are doing well in, not just in Chestertown, but in all the towns. And on the 18th, I attended the Riddin Cudding with the cottage on the Kent, which is up on Kent Street. What a beautiful place that he's, he's got over. And he's gonna operate it as a bed and breakfast. A little more elaborate than most bed and breakfast because it has several rooms and a kitchen and a toilet. And you can, short-term, you can rent it for a week or two, I guess. I was ready to move in tomorrow because it's really, really nice. Nice to fit it out. And finally, I'd like to thank every, thank, wish everybody a very nice, happy Thanksgiving. Everybody, everybody, but especially those people who live in Chestertown. I hope you have a nice Thanksgiving and I'm looking forward to it myself. And that's Ward 4.
Great.
All is well in Ward 3. I wanna congratulate Mr. Els Tolliver again for winning Ward 3. In fact, he's already hard at work, working with a parent at Garnett Elementary School who has expressed concern about the drop-off situation in the morning and how several parents aren't quite following the traditional rules of the road and things seem to be willy-nilly and pretty crazy down there. So, they've reached out to, to myself and Mr. Tolliver. So he's, he's hard at work and he hasn't even taken the office just yet, so...
That's what happens. Your name's out there. It's too late.
But other than that, all is, all is well in Ward 3.
Okay, great. Linda?
Okay.
Marty, that's a long list.
Saturday, November 25th, which is this Saturday, and Saturday, December 2nd are Small Business Saturdays in Chestertown. And customers can get a passport from the information booth. And each time you go into a business, you get your passport stamped. You don't have to make a purchase to get your passport stamped. And then you can turn in your passports. The more stamps you have on your passport, the better chance you have of winning a prize, which will, there'll be a separate prize, one for November 25th and one for December 2nd. And I meant to call Jen earlier this morning so she could get some figures for me because the Boardly, what do we call it now? The Boardly Information, wait a minute, I've got it here someplace. I always call it this Historical Society, but it's the... Yes, thank you very much. The figures are in from February to October. And we had over 2,000 people visit the center for those months.
From when to when? From when to when?
From February through October. That's not counting all of the people who come to the first Friday lecture, which the room holds about 50 people. I think we've set up about 50 seats. So, that's a lot of people. And I was wondering how many visitors have gone through the Visitors Center.
I know that they keep a count, but I get it annually. I don't know it monthly, but I can, I'll get it for you.
And I had announced a couple of weeks ago when we had the Harry Potter Festival and the house tour, and I said 140 people had purchased tickets and actually it was 160. And I still didn't know anybody, but we did have one person come on the tour who has moved to Chestertown and bought a house on Cameron Street.
That's great.
Yeah, it, it really is. And the, the Boardly Center will extend its hours from December 6th through the 16th, which is Wednesday through Saturday each week. They'll be open from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. That's three additional hours. And then December 20th to the 23rd, the hours will change from 10:00 a.m. to noon to 7:00. And that's also Wednesday through Saturday and will even be open on Christmas Eve from 10:00 to 2:00. So, I just wanted to remind everybody about the ethics training on December 8th at 10:00 a.m. And I saw that the email went out to the newly electeds. And, be doings this weekend, next weekend. Gonna be busy in town.
The one thing I wanted just, because it's that season, to remind everyone about leaves. And to not put them in the gutters of the streets. They should be left on your own property, but close to the curb. Because when they go in the gutters, they wash down into the storm drains and that's an awful lot of biomass going down the drains and plugging them and everything. Bill, is there anything I've left out? If large, if you're not on one of the main streets, you should call in for pickup, right?
Always call in.
Always call in if you have a large pile of leaves out. And...
We have to talk to Mother Nature too, because with all the winds.
I know. It's been amazing the last few days. But I noticed huge piles starting to gather in the first ward the last day or two. So, just reminding people about that and that is all.
Okay, great. There were no requests to be on the agenda for the public? Are there any questions or comments from the audience tonight? The massive audience. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we are officially adjourned.
All in favor? Any opposed?